The indicator is and then the amount of funding that was spent for the 2024 program year towards that goal. And then it also, um, it gives you the strategic plan goals, which are the five-year goals, which is our consolidated plan, five-year goal plan. And then the, uh, program year goals are just for the 2024 program year that ended June 30th. So, uh, and this is also based on our prior consolidated plan, because the 2024 program year was the final year of that five-year plan that went from 2020 to 2024. I know that seems like four years, but it is five years. Um, so if we're looking at some of our homeless prevention services, this goal, uh, both for the year and for the five-year strategic plan, um, really went above and beyond in what it achieved. Um, we have one primary organization who supports this, Snoke County Legal Services. Uh, they were able to take very limited funding and make it stretch as far as they could. And they really were able to surpass what they had expected. Um, they also, they used to get CDBG funding and human needs funding. Um, so this year they only had the CDBG funding, so it was a little limited. Um, but they really, really went, like I said, kind of above and beyond and really surpassed that goal. For our other public services, the next one that included some things, uh, like childcare and behavioral health services. That's another one where it, there were multiple organizations contributing to that one, and they really, um, went above and beyond. And if you look at the strategic plan, it, uh, and this is how we say the numbers don't always tell the whole story. So our goal was a thousand, but yet we had fifty-nine thousand. You have to keep in mind that a lot of this was due to COVID relief funding. So during COVID, there was a food bank that received, uh, some funding, some special funds, CDBG COVID funds. And they were able to serve a ton of people in the community. So they basically helped meet that goal very quickly. But, you know, everything adds up and all of our services, uh, are really benefiting low-income residents throughout the Everett community. So moving down to the next one, rehabilitation of existing units. You'll notice where it says, under the amount, it says EN stands for entitlement funds. And then below that is revolving loan or PI stands for program income. And so EN is entitlement. That's the money that we get every year from HUD for our community development block grant funding. And then the revolving loan income, uh, mostly comes from loan repayments or, or payments in general for housing rehabilitation, major re-housing rehabilitation loans that are being paid back. So with that one, uh, you'll see the asterisk by the number eighty-four in the program year achievements. We do have, um, one organization that requested an extension of their, um, grant. So it is ending, instead of ending June 30th, it was extended to August 31st. So they're still expending funds and we expect that that achievements will rise, um, because they're, they're having two more months where they're able to provide services. So we will very likely meet the program year goal. And obviously we have far exceeded the five-year goal. Uh, with rental assistance, so that's one where it looks like we achieved less than we had, you know, by almost half. With that, that eighty-seven persons receive, were, uh, received assistance through rental assistance, through multiple organizations. We did have another organization that unfortunately went out of business after they had been awarded funds. And that organization tended to, to serve very large families, so they had a lot higher goal. So the, the goal is when we do the annual action plan is based on, you know, what is, whoever applied for the funds, what they forecasted at the time. Um, but at any rate, serving eighty-seven, uh, residents with rental assistance with fifty-three thousand dollars is still pretty remarkable. So we are very excited to, uh, talk about, we had, we had quite a few capital projects that were funded in the 2023 program year, but actually were completed in the 2024 program year. Two of them happened at a community center, Village, uh, on Casino Road. So they had, they had two separate projects that was funded under kind of one funding source, but we broke it into two projects. One was a security upgrades project that occurred. And then another was replacing the flooring in two of the four buildings. So it, it now has new vinyl plank flooring. And if you looked at the, the caper, the full caper, you saw there were a couple of pictures showing the beautiful new flooring. Um, so that served, uh, the fifty-six twenty, uh, residents in that community with the, with those improvements. And then with the public facilities, the city projects, again, those were funded in 2023. We had the transit project where, um, that wrapped up in this program year, where ninety-four, uh, bus stops gained new seating for passengers to use while they were awaiting their bus. So, um, we wrapped that one up and then the other, the parks project, the pedestrian path. That one, we did the environmental review. It's going through the design phase and we expect that that one's going to wrap up by the end of the 2025 program year. So capital projects tend to be more complicated and lengthier and there's more steps and more processes. So, uh, they don't always happen as quickly as we would like, but we are excited, um, when we are able to get those wrapped up. Um, and you'll notice on the expected program year goals versus the actual program year achievements, so the hundred and thirty thousand. We didn't realize it at the time, but the way the HUD, um, basically IT system works is because, uh, those improvements, those bus stops were located throughout the city of Everett. Uh, and the city of Everett qualifies as being over, uh, fifty-one percent low mod income, according to the HUD area media income index. Uh, the, it basically counted the whole city under our achievements. So we just kind of put a number out there like this, we'll have fifteen thousand. Um, but really, uh, that goal was far surpassed as well. So under economic development, this is one that, that goes back to, it's, it shows the two hundred and ten thousand for the CDBG CB funding. That was more of the COVID funding, but these accomplishments are being reported in the 2024 caper. Uh, so this was, uh, small business and micro enterprise assistance that helped, uh, businesses during the pandemic. And that, we were one away from meeting our overall strategic plan goal. We just, uh, have forty-nine, uh, accomplished, uh, and our goal was fifty. So for emergency shelter, homeless person overnight shelter, uh, our goal was sixty. And this is another one where it's kind of hard to fully capture all the services that were provided via numbers. There were ninety-nine referrals to services and shelter. Three of those actually resulted in someone staying at a shelter. But like other people may have exited, or exited to like a subsidized housing program or transitional housing, or maybe they went to live with their family again or with friends or something. So it, it, it is helping a lot of people, but only three were counted as, um, homeless person overnight shelter. So the public process for the caper, um, it's a fifteen-day public comment period. And so comments are accepted in writing to me, VDoorway@EverettWa.gov, or you can mail comments to my attention through September ninth. Uh, the caper is currently posted online, the full caper, eighty-one pages or however long it is, um, at EverettWa.gov and it's our community development block grant webpage. So, so that's a quick summary of our caper. Um, I know committee members had it in advance and were probably able to at least look through it a little bit and see how in-depth it is. Um, but that is, um, when we get the final numbers, because this is kind of the preliminary numbers that we have, is we get more data from that one program that is requested an extension and finalize some other numbers. You know, there might be like little minor changes to some of the accomplishments or the amount of funds expended. Um, but that is what we will be submitting to HUD as our, uh, report for this year. So before I move on, I will see if anyone, uh, from the committee has any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so the funds for the rental assistance, the company that went out of business, they had already been awarded the funds. Did the funds come back?
Yes.
Okay.
They went out of business at the end of the prior program year. So we were able to distribute their funds between the two other, uh, entities.
Okay.
Received funding, so, um, there were two, uh, Interfaith and YWCA, since they were already administering rental assistance. We basically divided the funds between those two organizations. So they would still go for the same intent, which was to provide rent assistance.
Sure. Thank you.
Good question. With that, we will move on to Kimberly's portion of the presentation, which I will pull up.
It's so quiet. I don't want anybody to go asleep, so I'm gonna speak really loud and make sure that everybody's really awake. Exactly right. Do some light stretching while we do some technical adjustments, get the presentation ready. Josh's plants behind you, by the way, are this very nice, like, background. I have a Zoom background. It's kind of similar, but just not as nice. Okey-dokey. Um, so again, Kimberly Landry, Community Development Manager. Um, we are, uh, I'm gonna present, uh, our discussion for our priority needs and our prior year funding, um, which will be the formal public hearing, um, that you guys are acting on today. So again, our public process, um, so identification of twenty-two, twenty-six priority needs does require a public hearing and public comment period under our citizen participation plan and additional federal guidance from HUD. Um, if anybody's interested, our, uh, citizen participation plan, which we commonly refer to as the CPP. You can never have enough acronyms, is, uh, available, um, for review if anybody wants to see it. But it mandates that we have our fifteen-day public comment period and another just standard public process. Um, in that, it also discusses, um, what we do when we have minor amendments or any amendments, substantial, minor, just edits to our annual action plan or consolidated plan and what process that has. So in this case, there's a threshold of when we need to go above reallocation of either fifty percent of a project or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We do come back to this committee and notify you of reallocations. Um, we try and stay, I mean, we don't try. We aim to stay consistent with the contingency projects that you identify in the prior funding year. But, um, that is all also listed on the citizen participation plan. Um, public comments on the priority needs that you'll be discussing tonight, again, are the same as they were for the caper presentation that Vicki just went through, which are that they need to be submitted and submitted in writing. Vicki is still the point of contact with that. For those that may not be able to see the screen, I'm gonna say her email, which is B D O R W A Y at EverettWa.gov. Or you can just mail them, um, to the Community Development Division at twenty-nine thirty Wetmore, uh, Suite Eight A. Um, comments on needs are accepted for a longer period than the caper, uh, comment period, thus through September twenty-third. That's because we allow for one month for comments on priority needs. Thank you, Vicki. Um, okay, so our priority needs for, uh, from the consolidated plan, I just want to remind everyone that we did go through a very extensive public engagement session for our consolidated plan. Um, and so because that was so extensive, our twenty-two-five program year, which officially started on July first, uh, we, we don't know what the accomplishments are yet against that. Um, and we won't until obviously this time next year. Um, and so what we're looking at and what we asked the committee kind of confirm and consider is that because we don't know what accomplishments still need to be met, that we maintain, um, priority needs for all identified needs, because we're still recognizing that even though we may have some applicants that may have met some needs under housing or even public services, we still have these objective numbers for accomplishments and we just do not know what those numbers will be. And so we're asking that all of the needs identified previously for the twenty-two-five annual action plan period, which were consistent with the overall needs for the con plan, are, um, are adopted further for the twenty-two-six program year. Again, just to go over it, for those that may not be able to see the screen as well, I'm just gonna mention the priority needs as they're listed. We have behavioral health, um, as a priority need. That includes mental health, um, and substance use disorder activities. We have housing as a priority need that includes unsheltered persons, emergency shelter activities, stability activities that could include, uh, rental assistance, that could include case management. That could include any other number of things that lead towards housing stability. We have preservation and creation of affordable housing units. Um, those are, uh, capital expenditures. So that's where we see some of our rehabilitation programs, some of our creation of new. I'm gonna put a little asterisk there and remind everybody that CDBG can only be used for rehab of housing units, not for the creation of new home program funds are the only funds available to do that or the local affordable housing dollars that, uh, but the city and the county both are seeking. Uh, we have public services. Um, the priority, uh, activities under public services are childcare, youth and food. Um, I'll pause here and also just say for any applicants or anybody interested in incurring applicants for, uh, the next few years, just because an activity is not listed on the screen does not exclude anybody from applying. But what it means is that when you guys are reviewing, um, applications for funding considerations, the activities that meet these needs first will be first considered for funding and then anything available or identified for contingency later then can be considered to then be funded after these needs are first met. Um, to continue, we have economic development needs. These were, uh, this was a priority that also was carried forward from the prior consolidated plan. Um, the prior consolidated plan was a period of time that included COVID and recovery from COVID. And so I'm gonna go ahead and identify that we weren't great at getting a lot of activities to fall under economic development outside of that CV, micro enterprise, small business assistance that we had. Um, would still love to see this continue forward because the public did say that they want to continue to support economic development activities for business support, technical assistance that can help with businesses on establishing good processes and practices so that they're successful. Job skill training and job placement, of course, facade improvements and other capital project, and then micro enterprise support. Just for fun knowledge on stuff, micro enterprises are a small, um, employee subset. I think the threshold's twenty or twenty-five employees or less is, um, micro enterprise. And with that, one of the things that we look at is that we want to make sure that the, um, business owner themselves is also identified as low income. So we try and, um, acknowledge that that's a very important thing that we want to continue to support. Um, community and neighborhood facilities, another way that you may have seen this is public facilities. Um, that's everything from a food bank to a, a pavilion in a park, um, to a community center. Um, it really has a, a diverse, um, kind of, uh, definition to it, but is capital. This does have to be a capital improvement. The Child's Tribe Project that, uh, Vicki just mentioned at the Village is a perfect example of this, where we do improvements at the facility for roofing or flooring or security or HVAC or whatever it may be, so that the persons being served who are low income get to benefit from a better, um, structure that they, uh, visit and also, um, sometimes conduct business in. And then public infrastructure. Public infrastructure is everything from the sidewalk improvements that are happening with the park project at Walter Hall Park, um, to lighting and infrastructure improvements, to, uh, utility lines and just making sure that our, um, general public infrastructure, we try to stay away from road improvements, um, because it's way too expensive to be able to cover some of this, um, are, um, are met so that the people that are also in the neighborhood get to benefit from, um, good, uh, public, uh, infrastructure. So sorry, I know I keep moving this for those of us in here, but it's trying to make it seem. Um, so just to, uh, reiterate, so following the public comment period for the identification of needs, we always kick out our notice of funding availability, um, and that is when we formally open for applications. This will be for the twenty-two-six program year again. That's from July first of twenty-six until June thirtieth to twenty-seven. Um, the, um, date that we're looking at to launch applications is on September twenty-ninth. Um, I, I'd say we are looking at to launch. Um, in case that date moves, we will be putting out communication, but we are striving to meet that date. So, um, please stay tuned. For those that may not, uh, know how to get in contact with us to get notification on this, I'm gonna reiterate that we have a news flash on our website, Community Development News Flash, and please register for that when you need, um, updates on what we're doing for public comment as well as our application period. I am going to remind anybody that's interested that submittal of, um, applications are only through our online grant management portal, which is known as Amplifund. Um, that makes it a little bit easier. We used to do paper copies and I don't know if, uh, anybody remembers that, but that was an effort. And so we were very glad to have Amplifund to make it a little bit easier to review applications. Um, we are trying to keep our application period open for about five weeks, so that'll take us until about October thirty-first. Um, and we do, because this is a software, an online software, have a hard cutoff deadline of noon on that day. So unfortunately, we cannot give extensions or submittals for anybody that might be dealing with any issues. I'm also going to do a housekeeping mention in that if there are applicants that need to get their password again or if staffing has changed in your organization, the city of Everett does not manage, um, applicant website information for Amplifund. You will need to reach out to the Amplifund help desk. Please do that well in advance of asking us, uh, about your application submittal. Okay, um, oh, and I, just one more thing that, um, wasn't on the prior slide that I want to mention. We are encouraging that capital projects meet with staff ahead of time so that we can talk about timeline and expectations for environmental reviews and also just consistency with just pro- process on that, so that by the time that the committee gets to review it, you know that the application is a good viable one that then can get vetted, um, for the capital improvements. We want to try and make sure that the, um, small, small pool of money that we do have for capital projects is effectively utilized. Um, okay, so for, uh, unallocated funding for twenty-two-five. So in the closure of the twenty-two-four program year, which just ended, as well as other prior program years, because it just takes us a while, like, uh, Vicki mentioned, we have that project that started in twenty-three that finally closed out in the twenty-four program year. Um, we have activities that, um, don't use all of their funding. And so, um, it leaves us with what we call unallocated funds at the end of the program year. Um, we also have, uh, pending a program income payment that is planned to be received in the second quarter of this year. Um, we can track those through loans that we give out with our capital projects. So it's called an accounts receivable, um, that we are able to track. And so we know that that's gonna be coming in, uh, to comply with timeliness considerations. And those have to be met every year by May second. HUD was looking at revisiting that requirement, um, about two years ago. That has since paused and so we are now back to the standard process of timeliness, which is that every May second, we have a threshold that we must meet, that we must be under. Um, so to comply with those timeliness considerations and with the prior resolution of eighty-one seventy-two, that was the resolution that passed the twenty-two-five funded activities. So all of your recommendations go under council for adoption, under resolutions. Um, funds will be out, reallocated for immediate expenditure. That's our standard process, um, so that we are able to expend the, the money and time to meet that timeliness threshold. Uh, keep going, Lynn. Great. So what are we looking at when we're talking about money? So, over on the left-hand side, we have our revenue. So we have, uh, this is our pending recapture program income that I said was coming. Um, FIFO is another fun acronym, because again, you can't never have enough. Means first in, first out, which means that we have to spend this money before we, um, spend what are called our entitlement funds. So when I talk about the fact that we had projects that did not spend all of their money, tho- those projects used entitlement or EN funds. And so we, we have to sit on those, but then before we can even touch those funds, we have to spend whatever program income we receive. So, um, with the recapture program income and then what was uncommitted prior year entitlement funds or unallocated prior year entitlement funds of about, not about, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. We have five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to the penny, which is very nice. And so with that, we are following the contingency projects awarded, um, that were discussed last year, as well as in the resolution. I'm gonna pause here and also bring up something else that's going for our contingency projects. So when we first went out for the twenty-two-five program year, we estimated that we might have.
Seventy-five.
Seven seventy-five. We got, we were awarded more than that, which was fabulous. Um, and so with that, all of the prior year, um, projects or all the projects that started on July first of this year, all got elevated already for their funding asks to the, to match the funding ask that they originally came in for, as well as the priorities that you all had identified. You all had identified, I mean, unfortunately, I don't know the, uh, note that I had on this off the top of my head, but childcare, um, food and, um, another one. And so we, so Meals on Wheels, for example, um, got an increase in their award. Um, and, uh, housing efforts got, that was, the housing one was the other one. Housing efforts got increases in their awards and then we still had this extra money left over even after that. And so that was fabulous that we got an increase in what our full award was gonna be for the year, which is great because we were able to increase people's out, um, award allocations per the discussions that we had. Oh goodness, whenever the committee meet and had the, which feels like a year ago, so I might be right on that one. It feels like last November. And so in addition to that, we still had this other money. Well, of course, this other money still has to be spent. So to that extent, we go back and then we revisit, okay, now, where are our next contingency projects that we revisit even after everyone else got up? And so one of those was the Upwards Boost Childcare Program, which we have an attendee tonight who can speak on that and answer any questions. Um, also, committee members were given a public comment on that application. Uh, that's a two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar award. I'm gonna note that, um, the agency is aware that they will be working to still meet a timeliness consideration. So they have a priority of looking to commit and expend a lot of those funds by, I think, end of March, early April, somewhere around there. Um, and, uh, staff, their staff can talk more about how they, uh, look to do that. Um, we also have, um, we're looking to increase two hundred, up to two hundred thousand for city public improvements. Um, previously, we had already awarded fifty thousand for that. And this is another contingency consideration, um, that was identified. And so this would bring the total award up to two hundred and fifty thousand. When we're prioritizing downtown, the South Everett Casino Road area, Casino Road area was, um, one of the, um, areas that we looked at for the, uh, Walter Hall Park improvements. Um, this'll, while that was a pedestrian path connection, uh, these public infrastructure improvements are more than likely going to be focused on increased lighting for the down, for that area, um, as well as increased lighting in downtown, as well as some beautification. I think, I believe that some of our economic development staff are already working on wrap boxes in that area just to help liven up the community and the neighborhood. just to help liven up the community in the neighborhood in South Casino Road. Um, but this will be added to that pot of money for both the downtown and that South Everett Casino Road area, both of which are identified as um majority low-income areas under census. And then Walter Hall Pedestrian Park Path Project has already been awarded 350,000. Um, construction considerations have asked that uh the um design process that they're uh wrapping up now, the consultants have come back and said that um it's entirely possible due to uh materials going up in the last uh two years since we initially looked at awarding this project. Um, that they're going to need about $80,000 more. They did get a uh park staff did reach out to um the other entities to help try and sleuth other funding for this. Um, they did get a $15,000 grant from AARP. Um, unfortunately, that just wasn't enough to um fully help with the increase in costs. Um, so that one will end up going to a total award of um $430,000, and that uh brings us uh thankfully to the penny back to reconcile with what we have for available revenue. Again, all of this is looking to be expended and done by next um spring. So this uh should be helping to clean us up so that also in the future, we really shouldn't have as much um re-unallocated funding, but who knows? Uh, so um to stay consistent then with um where we're at for moving forward then for future awards. Um, after we end up having our NOFA for the applications, you all will be looking to meet again on November 18th. So again, applications close on October 31st. They will go through an initial two-week period. We're going to try and do concurrent staff review the last week of the applications and then the first week of November. And then we will be releasing the applications to the committee for review. Um, with one of our um hearings happening about two weeks later, um on November 18th. And then um we're looking at potentially another week or another hearing in December. We're trying to be mindful of, uh, you guys will have a volunteer appreciation event uh for boards and committees going on in December. So we want to try and be mindful of that, so we don't, we usually, um, we have an uncanny ability to time that at the same time every year of that event, so we're going to try and uh get ahead of that this year. So I apologize for you guys not knowing that hearing date in December yet, but I would suspect it's in the second or sort of maybe December. Becky might put us to the next slide. I'm just looking that we're like exactly on time. Wonderful. That's the act. Wonderful. And so with that, then I'm going to remind uh Chair about the discussion for the public hearing, which is that you guys will be looking to discuss the priority needs, and we'd be happy to bring that up again in case anybody needs that list again. Um, and since you did all the hard work for contingency identification in the last meetings, um, there's nothing to do on the funding allocations, but again, the staff for Upwards are available here should you have any questions that you would like to talk with them about, in addition to the public comment that was provided. Um, so Chair, I believe it goes back to you.
Good. Thank you both. All right, so for the public hearing, um, just as a reminder for the rules of conduct, uh, comments are limited to three minutes. In-person attendees will be first. Uh, when called upon, please state your name, followed by your public comment. Uh, before we do that, uh, from the committee, I would need to entertain a motion to open public hearing.
We'd make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, uh, so. So it would be beginning with uh attendees in person with any public comment. Do you, I'm sorry, did you guys say that they're? Was there in-person ones that wanted to make a comment?
Correct. We have one, one attendee in person, I believe, that's making a comment, one visitor with us as well. But um for the attendee that's ready to make a public comment, I would ask that you introduce yourself first. And you have three minutes, I believe, for the uh initial public comment. And then um I know that the committee has a process for asking questions after uh public comment closes, so.
Thank you, committee members. Uh, my name is Melanie Forham. I'm the Community Impact Manager at Upwards. Um, and on behalf of the Boost team, we just are honored that the city's identified Boost as a contingency project for consideration of unallocated uh contingency funds. So I just wanted to um provide a quick overview of Boost and then like uh, Cammer mentioned, I'm here to answer any questions you might have. So Boost is really geared towards uh equipping Everett's low to moderate income micro enterprise in-home childcare providers with personalized coaching and digital tools to optimize their operations and increase the revenue. Um, this helps them um expand capacity, create local teaching assistant jobs, and uh expand access to affordable quality childcare for all the families in the community. Um, Boost addresses a huge need in Everett, as you could see from the consolidated plan goals. I think it marks, it clicks four of those goals, um, so definitely covers a lot of the goals, including goals that are listed under public service, which is capped. So I like to say it kind of hits two birds with one stone. Um, but to recap, over 60% of the children, so there's over 3,000 children who wouldn't have access to a licensed childcare slot in the city. Not to mention the cost of care. Uh, and then meanwhile, the childcare providers make less than $19.50 an hour, which qualifies many of them. Of course, looking at household income as well as low to moderate income, which makes it hard for them to sustain, let alone grow their business. Um, so the providers we uh, you know, partner with, they love caring for children, but um often need help with marketing and curriculum planning and managing day-to-day operations, which is exactly what Boost helps them do and more. So just to quickly recap, we take like a three-pronged approach where every provider is paired with a multilingual care specialist. And this is a dedicated business coach with their own lived experience of running successful in-home daycares who um help them create a custom action plan, identify their strengths and weaknesses, and um, yeah, create that, that plan for them to hit their own personal goal by the end of the business or the 12-month period. They also walk them through a tailored curriculum. This is Boost's tried and true best practices of running a successful daycare long-term. And then we also have a proprietary childcare management software system that helps them with all the back office. Um, you know, everything from enrollment and billing. Um, as a parent, uh, my favorite aspect is the curriculum database. So we have a really robust curriculum database. Um, that makes it easy for them to make a lesson plan in about 45 minutes for the entire week and saves them about 10 hours a week at least, um, which helps with burnout. So, uh, so I want to highlight that the program is available. While the providers are considered the direct beneficiaries, that any family in Everett is also um able to benefit from the program and access 24/7 support from our care specialists, which help with um emergency backup care, including uh finding a match within 24 hours, which um thanks to those childcare providers is how I can be with you here today.
Great, thank you. And you say we had one online or is that the only public comment?
Uh, we have two attendees um that are online. I'll have to check with Becky to see if we've had a request for them to have a public comment. Not that I have received and not that they told me, that I think they just wanted to be available in case the committee had any questions for them. Okay, they're from the Snohomish County Legal Services, and so if the committee has discussion after this, that they would like to have response from SCLS, then we will transition them over to speak at that time.
Okay. Okay, uh, so there's no further public comment. Um, I would then entertain a motion to close public comment.
Can we ask a question?
Uh, you'll want to close public comment first.
I move that we close the public comment period.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Great, thank you. Okay, so now we can move into committee discussion.
Okay.
So is uh, uh, so you did say that you had questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
So uh, I, I'm curious what will happen at the end of the funding period for you in March and that how those providers will be able to continue, you know? Or does this um boost them up enough that they can get through that? And then, you know, should you get more funding down the road, then you can work with other providers? I'm just curious what happens within the process.
Yeah, no, so that's a great question. Um, and really sustainability is at the core of the model. Um, so in areas like Bellevue where we're going into our second year is to bring on a new cohort of providers. Um, so the idea is that we're giving them this intensive um one-on-one mentorship um that really, like I said, is tailored to hitting, of course, we have the contractual goals of increasing revenue and capacity and everything, but we want to really hit their own personal business goals. Um, we give them uh all these custom marketing materials that they obviously can retain access to from in the web listing, that's not just through our platform, that's like a Google search. Um, we give them like logos if they need it, flyers so forth. All of that can be translated. But I think what's really at the heart of the sustainability is the continued free access to our platform. So when I say that platform can save them at least 10 hours a week, they retain free access to that platform.
After the.
After the program.
After.
In.
Okay.
In perpetuity. I mean, so long as they're in good standing as a licensed provider, um, then they would, you know, they would retain free access to the platform. So that really, we teach them how to use it. We can identify during the program year any blockers they have um at, with both the platform or the curriculum and um work through those blockers. So it's really that kind of uh, you know, teach a woman a fish philosophy. Um, and um, we, again, I think the, the care specialists, like the business coaches, they tend to get so close with many of the providers that they kind of keep in touch. But we do still have a team outside of the Boost team that's available for 24/7 support um just through the platform. So they would still get support. We also do a lot of community outreach and um will connect them with other existing resources as well so that uh we can make sure that they're just aware of the other resources, like in addition to ours, that they can access.
One more question, if it would. Are you ready to go as soon as the funding is released? You've got the per, the childcare providers identified that are gonna, you're gonna onboard into the program?
Yeah, another great question. We're already connected to all the licensed providers in the city, so we want to make sure. And we're partnered with a number of them, but we um would want to make sure that we reach out to all of the licensed providers. And then we um, there are, you know, over double the providers that we would be oh, hopefully awarded funding to support initially, and so we would um prioritize them based on their need, so high-risk factors. Um, so they're all like low to moderate income, but we would base them on um basically who is in most urgent need of support.
Thank you very much.
Definitely ready to go on.
Um, I have a question. So regarding the um curriculums that you do with the sudden closure with the early learning uh program at Everett Community, have you seen an increase uh in, in need for this?
Um, we've seen an increase in need kind of across the board. I mean, due to a number of factors, including like increased overhead for these providers and more, you know, um, uh, like I said, higher burnout rate um and difficulty retaining staff, which obviously doesn't help with the burnout rate. Um, in terms, I don't, I want to make sure I understand your question though correctly, because uh the curriculum, I would say, is just like a, a general pain point, especially when the providers are so bogged down with all the administrative side, like they work such long hours. And then if they're doing um all the admin stuff in terms of billing and trying to just do enrollment through word of mouth and everything like that, that leaves them very little time for any kind of lesson planning. Um, and so by helping with all those other areas and then giving them like basically free lesson plans that are um, that they can really make customized, like in terms of meeting the learning styles of, of their kids.
Sure.
We make that all easy so that they, we encourage them to actually do it um and stay up with it. But I don't know, did that answer your question?
I, I was just curious, um, with the closing of the early learning, like if you had more people coming to you specifically because of like helping build the curriculum that you do. Because I assume that means more children needing to go to uh providers and providers needing to be able to provide that sort of early learning um capabilities, especially with the loss of it at Everett Community. So I would, I would think that there would be an increase elsewhere, uh, having lost that.
So he's talking about the closure of the Everett Community College Early Learning Center.
So, yeah, I imagine, um, full disclosure, I work more on the, the government side. So we have a different team who's in touch with the providers on a day-to-day basis.
Sure.
Um, I imagine that is the case too, but I um am not as much in touch with the providers on a day-to-day basis as much as I'd love to be.
Okay.
I have a question. Okay, so do you reach out to these licensed providers? Do you just get their data from the licensing? Or do you have an outreach?
Both.
Okay.
So we um are connect, yes, we are constantly checking the licensing database to make sure that there, we basically scrub that database um continuously to make sure that they're still actively licensed. Um, we also have visibility in those who were recently licensed and no longer licensed. Um, but we also, I'd say even more uh like up, up to date than the licensing database. We're always trying to pair families with providers, and so we're constantly in touch with the providers to see what their availability is. Um, so we're just in touch with them often. Um, but we would want to make sure that we're reaching out in the most equitable way. So usually that's all through like messaging and everything, but we would also do printed flyers if, you know, the ones who are in most need are the ones like ignoring their phone and email because they're so bogged down. So we would, you know, do a community outreach plan, but in terms of, you know, going back to being able to start from day one, that's where having um all their contact info already and being already connected with them on our, through our databases is very helpful.
And then a follow-up to that, um, do you have any visibility to, because you're working with existing providers, do you have any visibility to get the information out there that this program's available to people that might be considering becoming licensed daycare providers, but don't take that jump because they just do not have the support?
Yes, in a way. So that's another great question, especially considering um maybe the timing of our application for the next year. Uh, there would be enough, you know, depending on how many eligible providers, because we do have to income verify the folks. Um, so depending on how many applicants we receive from the first cohort, um, we would either, you know, um, we could bring on a second cohort of like, I guess, existing license. But to your question and your point, we do also, um, I can speak, I don't want to get off point, but I can speak to why we have such a robust nanny and babysitter network that we're growing. So when we're looking to like hire teaching assistants, we start with that pool because they're already pre-vetted um and clearly interested and see if they're interested in taking on a teaching assistant job. But we always have an eye towards supply building. So that's also where uh like in future years, if we were to work on supply building, that we would have that pool as well. And of course, where the community outreach connections come into play too, um, to spread the word. We do help, I mean, at the genesis of Upwards was to help folks get licensed. Um, when the pandemic hit, we shifted gears to help folks stay in business.
There you go.
But definitely, that's like kind of a multi-year approach where we would have an eye toward supply building and have some wonderful uh stories of teaching assistants and going on to open their own daycares. Um, we also really, I mean, at, at least a third, so um, for what we propose, that'd be 11 providers would bring on a teaching assistant, expand capacities. So we're also encouraging those who are licensed at a small licensed capacity to expand to large licensed capacity.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, any further questions from the committee? Okay, uh, so at this time, we will want to just move into um discussion of um the priority needs. And so just so I understand, so we have the, um, obviously we have the recommendations from the staff. Um, and this recommendation's already, is already included, like um from the request, like so from like homage and from um my gosh, my mind totally blanked uh from Boost. Like are they already included in the priority needs or is that something that we would be looking to discuss to be including?
Um, Homages is uh already included under the priority needs. Um, and I believe that for Upwards, that would also be included. And they're going to be in different buckets, so homage is going to focus on um housing as well as food uh for both because of their minor home repair and Meals on Wheels program in general, also because of what homage does to support senior. For both because of their minor home repair and Meals on Wheels program in general, also because of what homage does to support seniors. In the community. And then of course, Upwards and Boost meets both the economic development as well as the childcare element. For priorities, but we also, in case I misinterpreted the public comment. Could get clarification from the attendee in the room on that as well.
You mean when I said Ford? Oh, and maybe there were sub-bullet points under economic development. It's like job training, skills, micro enterprise, technical assistance, job creation too.
Okay, so.
So yes, Chair.
Okay, so, so we did go with recommendations. It's all right, we're not, we're not looking to like make any. We wouldn't have to be making changes in order to include them, basically is what you're saying.
Correct, not to include. So I guess the crux of what the committee has to discuss at this point for action. Is unless there's anything that's really kind of pulsing in your, in your mind for any of the. Contingencies that were identified, although again, you did do prior action on that. To just be mindful of that for your funding reallocations, but then also for the needs themselves. It goes back to that presentation that we had earlier, which Vicky has ready to pull up in case anybody wants to see the list again. Is recognizing that we're just in that weird time where. The program year just started, so we don't know the accomplishments that we will meet yet to help us finite priority needs. But if we have our committee members that have been on here for a bit to remember that. The more that we get into our consolidated plan over that five-year period. About around year three, we start to do a pulse check on how we're doing with priority needs. And if we start to go, hey, we really met our housing stability with rental assistance, you know, wow, we really met that. You know, that's the time that the committee gets to go like, yeah, no, but we need to elevate that again. That's, that's a growing need. That hasn't just stopped, or you know what, we met that, that's great. We know that need is still there, but now we really need to prioritize. Public infrastructure instead or something. I mean, it doesn't have to be that, but you know, so that's where we start to have a better. Check on where we're at with meeting the overall priorities and goals. And unfortunately, it's just the nature of. Planning so far ahead for federal funding and then trying to balance, you know, accomplishments and, and stuff that we're already, we're always going to be. Trying to figure out if it's ahead or behind, but either way, we're already, we're always off with the timing on checking for that. So it's about year three that we start to have a better. Image of where we're headed with our overall goals, which is why the staff is just recommending that we support. And the goals is where they were identified for the overall consolidated plan with all of the goals that you adopted last year. But committee is more than welcome to discuss, so.
Okay, for visibility, can we have them back up?
Sure, absolutely. So I am getting low on batteries, so I am going to plug in over here. Subtly off. Usually my power lasts longer. Okay, so let me get it shared.
Isn't some longer power adapters in there?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. He just left, so I didn't know if that was like.
Let it go. And there's a planning commission meeting tonight too, so just too many fun things. Is Chair, can you see the screen?
I can't, thank you.
Wonderful.
Is there any specific discussion from the committee on this? Or any questions about changing anything, or are we feeling comfortable with things?
Just say I'm, I'm feeling comfortable because I think that stability in the goals helps us achieve more. That's been my observation of that, so.
Susan?
Can we, but so under public services where it says childcare, youth and food. Can we either put vulnerable? Or elderly, can we, because like when Michelle asked about, you know, or you, Josh, asked about like homage. Like their, their focus is the elderly is what I read, right? So can we add that so that it covers it, so that?
Yes, absolutely. You guys can add that if you, if the committee votes to do so, then absolutely, yes, we can, we can add that as a. We do have youth there, so.
Well, specifically, that's why I'm saying if we just add that other, either vulnerable adults or elderly and, you know, I don't. Really need to get in the weeds about the wording, but we're being really specific about youth and I think. You know, I think everybody needs food, so.
That's a great point.
Yeah.
I, I have a, I have a thought. That, you know, what we're really talking about is maybe specifically is food insecurity.
Yes.
And so there's going to be, we already know there's going to be challenges around food insecurity. With funding to food banks and things like that, so. Would adding food in specifically saying food insecurity. Along with adding support for elderly, you know, would that help bridge that a little bit?
Absolutely add both of those.
Yeah.
Just help specify what the food.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's really gonna, it's really gonna drive the types of applications that you're going to get back.
Right.
So if you guys are saying that you would like to see that the food applications that we got address food insecurity, then we can add that.
So as the food banks aren't able to rely on federal funding coming from. Coming in and have been cut off from it, we're going to see, I think, greater food insecurity. Yeah, greater needs.
Yeah, a very good point, yeah. So to reiterate, so for right now, discussion is to add under public services specifically. An identification of seniors or elderly, and Susan might need to correct me on the wording.
No, that's what I wanted to add that, and, and it's in conjunction with what Michelle just said about food instability. But I want to, if we're, we don't have to add seniors or the elderly if we're just making it global food insecurity. Like we're, we're going to stabilize people's or help stabilize the food, the need for food in our community.
So then I'll, I'll make one clarification. So we were talking about two different things here then. So either, so we got food insecurity, I think that, you know, it's like we can absolutely make that a priority for a specific demographic group.
Okay.
If we want, or we can just leave it as an overall call-all for anybody that's dealing with food insecurity. And I know that for, if you've been on the committee for a while, we have our hot meals, we have the VOA Food Bank, you know, we have our Meals on Wheels program. So we do have our standard groups that come to us. I want to make a clarification because I thought that what we were also looking to consider. Is adding a additional public service focus on seniors.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I think so. I think we have to do both.
Okay, so I'm hearing support from that for one. I see a nod from another. Two more nods, great, okay. Okay, so I just want to make sure so that we can, so that staff can convey this appropriately. When we're getting questions for applications, that we've captured what you guys want to discuss appropriately.
Yes.
So.
Can we say seniors and vulnerable adults? It's kind of.
I think we can. I vote for that.
I know, I know why seniors tend to fall into vulnerable, vulnerable adults, not vulnerable adults fall into senior.
But there is, but there is that gap with vulnerable adults not, not meeting their threshold for senior or some other threshold. And so they're, they fall right through there.
So I am going to now, just because it's so fun to be the devil's advocate sometimes, but also to play the staff liaison with some of this.
Yeah.
What are we defining as vulnerable adults?
Oh, boring.
Because I will tell you, the federal guidelines do not have a definition, but what is, what does this committee? And what are we identifying as vulnerable adults by this committee?
Eighteen and up who are not able to take care for themselves is my definition. Because of mental health or physical incapacity.
A disability.
Yeah, disabilities.
I think it, to me, it's that gap, you know, with homage, with the meal delivery where. They weren't eligible for Meals on Wheels, but they were, but they're definitely vulnerable adults. That are not able to seek out their own meals or to do those kinds of things. And so there's other services in there that they can't access either because they're just not able to do that for themselves.
So to borrow language from one of our other nonprofits that we typically fund. And they identify the IDD and other persons that have on this disabled kind of spectrum. Are all the type of people that they support. So is that kind of who we're identifying as are vulnerable? Because sometimes vulnerable can also mean unhoused. And sometimes vulnerable can just mean low income. So I want to make sure that we're very clear on how staff can support the applications that you guys will get for.
I think some specificity in how you describe that as a vulnerable adult is a good thing.
Okay.
It's consistent with what language you've used.
Okay.
Yeah, and so under the state, I was curious, under state legislation, it defines this developmental disability as. Disability attributable to intellectual disability, cerebral palsy, epilepsy, autism. Or another neurological other condition of an individual found. By the secretary to be closely related to an intellectual disability or to require. Treatment similar to that required for individuals with intellectual disabilities.
And that does fall into the IDD, my, that's my daughter, that's my daughter, Natacha right there. So it's, yeah, and she's IDD. So I think that that's the most up-to-date.
Yeah.
Diagnosis that they use to kind of compensate, to kind of. Cool those issues.
Yeah.
Lack of better statement.
Yeah.
And specifically which can be continued or is expected to continue indefinitely.
Right.
I think that's where. Like that also specifically kind of identifies that is, it's not, it's not a temporary thing. It's somebody who, who is going to experience this continuously or indefinitely.
And they fall through the cracks continuously because they're too old for one program, too young for another.
Yeah, I have a cousin who would fall without family, would fall into that same spot.
Yeah.
Chair, because you brought up a resource, I'm going to ask that you send that to staff.
Sure, yeah, I have an RCW I can send to you.
Thank you so much.
So I, I do kind of want to clarify that because then I'm thinking of homage who serves maybe someone with a physical disability. That's not a senior. Are they being covered if we're specifying that it's IDD?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If we award them funds, can they only use the funds? For if we said IDD or senior, or can they use them as they see fit for their clientele?
The answer is it'll depend on their application. So if you guys specify that you want to have it prioritized for a certain subset of the population. Then what they will end up doing is the agency will apply for that, and then they will make it so that our funds, which are. You know, I mean, like we, our public service dollars aren't as much as they possibly could be to cover everything with this anyway. But then the agency will make sure that those funds only support the subset population that your guys are looking to support.
Now we're getting really narrow.
And that's, so we have perks, and so there's this dichotomy that you have to kind of live with, you know, it's like, do you want to be. Specific, or do we want to be, you know.
Well, can it just be disabilities? Does it have to, do we have to name them like mental or physical, I mean, disabilities are disabilities, right?
I think that's.
Being on such a same.
Yeah.
I think a little broader is going to help the agency. With their services.
Like you know the answer.
No, I know. Whatever you guys vote to agree on is totally fine, but it's, I want to make sure that again. That, you know, Vicky and I will end up having discussions with these agencies throughout this period. And a, and a month from now, I promise you that Vicky and I are going to be like, hey, what did the committee specifically want? When they wanted to prioritize this, and I just want to make sure that again, we're conveying your wishes appropriately.
I want to help everybody who can't help themselves, so.
And you're in the right spot to start doing it. And with that, it's just a matter of, you know, it's, we're back to, we have so many agencies that serve so many. Vulnerable people.
Right.
And I think that what is important for you all to keep in mind is that we have. Every once in a while, we get this nice influx of unallocated funding that goes, woo, we get to actually do stuff. None of that gets to stay though with public services because under federal funds for this funding pool specifically. We are constantly capped, so no matter what it is, that 15% never gets that unallocated money. So if you guys want to specifically have it focus on things, which is fabulous, it's a great idea. Then we, then we focus on elevating that. We can always revisit this also next year and you guys can change it. If you're like, man, that was too general, or man, that was too specific, we can always come back and do, and. Use it again so that it's a bit more kind of encompassing or whatever. But it's, it comes back to what it is that you want to identify. That's the whole purpose of your role here on the committee. Is to be the voice for the community, and so I give it back to you. On how you would like to prioritize funding for this next year. And, and what would be one of the most competitive categories agencies will apply under, so no pressure, but it's. And public services definitely have a lot of requests.
Would, would, going back to that term food insecurity, would that encompass like people, like, like. Any of the clientele that homage would be dealing with, which is disabled and, and senior. Because they have a food insecurity. It doesn't matter if they're white, blue, brown, purple. They're someone with it in food insecurity. Would that kind of help kind of keep it with the food? And keep it with the people that they feel truly need it.
Yeah, so now we're basing it on the goal of the program and not who they serve, right? So, and but, so for that specific agency, then yes, you end up.
I'm just using them as an example, but yeah.
But you have, I'm going to, just because again, I'd love to give you guys the other side of this, right? We have some agencies whose mission is specifically focused, so they might still apply for food insecurity. But they are going to only have a subset of the population that they serve based on their mission.
Okay.
So. Yeah, it's. However, you guys want to, want to do it, so. So again, so we're back to, so what I'm hearing though, I'm going to revisit it for clarity. We are adding food insecurity. To the needs. And so our other question is coming back to the other element was a demographic subset. So as we have youth identified on here, we have not clarified, you know, if the youth are another specific subset of youth, it's just youth. And so what I'm, what we talked about previously were seniors and the elderly.
Okay, I'm going to go backwards a little bit, and why do we, why did we add youth? Why did we specifically, I understand childcare completely because it's a huge need in our community. But why did we specify youth? Does anybody remember?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to do my best to put on my 2023.
Yeah, forget it.
And with that, or 2020, whatever it was. And that was something that came out of public engagement, so that extends a period that we had with just going to the general public. And that comes, I mean, like that being said, we come back to like, okay, so it's, it's going to be. You have childcare and childcare could be, you know, everything from economic development focus to childcare to childcare subsidies. You know, that, that are given, you know, or, or just operations of a childcare facility. And then youth focus is going to be that we may get a, because we've had in the past, a music initiative group.
Right.
And so it has nothing to do with childcare and everything to do with they serve persons under 18. And it's going to be anybody that, of course, they still have to base on, I'm going to remind us that. This specific federal fund pool still has to have that anybody that benefits from it still has to be low income. So the youth are part of low-income households. But it's, you know, it's not related to childcare and it's not related to food, you know.
Well, we can absolutely just add elderly and disabled and just keep it a generic.
Yeah.
If we're just going to do youth and it encompasses all kinds of things, then we could just do disable. The disabled and elderly.
Along with the food insecurity.
Okay, so I hear two.
Yeah, if that works for you guys also, because it also has to work with the parameters of the.
It's broad enough to. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that.
Okay. Okay, so we're adding seniors and disabled persons. To our public service activities.
Correct.
Wonderful.
And then just to clarify with the word that food is up there, we're just adding insecurity to the end of that word.
Right.
Keeping food and then having food insecurity, it's just changing food to be food insecurity.
Keeping food and then having food insecurity. It's just changing food to be food insecurity.
Correct.
I believe that's true.
Okay, just confirming. So when, when this goes out for public comment, we have it correct. Yes. Okay.
I think everything else looks good.
Yeah, Chair, I believe this goes back to you to us though.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion from the committee? Are we discussioned out?
We've discussed.
That was a good discussion. Yeah.
Yes, it was. Okay, so then it looks like at this point, we would need a motion to formally adopt the priority needs that we've established.
I move that we accept the priority needs as they have been altered and established.
Does everyone second?
I second it.
I assume nobody opposed?
No.
Okay. And that looks like that is it for us. I will turn it back over to Steph.
Yay. Again, I want to say it again, I've said it before, but good conversation tonight, guys. I'm so happy with the questions that were asked and the discussion that you guys are having. It makes me so happy to have such an engaged committee. So yay. I believe that Vicky's gonna start on some staff updates and we'll, I know that we're past five, so we'll try and be fine to everyone's time. And then I'll wrap this up with some of the other funding updates that are going. So.
Great. Okay, so just a reminder, the public comment period for priority needs will end on September 23rd. And the public comment period for the 2024 caper will end on September 9th. We've discussed the tentative dates, but likely solid for the notice of funding availability for federal and state funding will run September 29th through October 31st. And that will be through Amplifund, our grant management software.
Even, do you want to talk about recruitment?
Oh, sure, you can. Okay, well, we'll be, so we're recruitment for additional boards and commissions is happening right now. We are looking to add a couple of people to the Community Development Advisory Committee. So if you know of anyone or recommend someone, please have them go to everettwad.gov, Boards and Commissions to look into applying for the committee. A few things that we're doing, the city is, we're trying to communicate kind of monthly topics during some of our meetings and committee meetings, things like that. So I'm just gonna touch base on a few things. One is the city budget. Right now, it's kind of, we're launching our summit budget, summer budget education campaign, kind of helping residents understand how the city finances work and what we're doing to plan responsibly. And just a few takeaways as a reminder, most of you probably know that Everett is a full-service city. So we provide a broad range of essential services, you know, besides police and fire. We have the animal shelter, libraries, utility services, parks and more. Some cities have regionalized some of their services, but Everett has not. Another thing is that our general fund is strained by state law, not by spending, because the state has that 1% cap on property tax growth. And so that's creating kind of a gap between what we can collect and what it costs to maintain services. So between inflation and different things, 1% isn't covering that increasing cost. We do manage our tax dollars responsibly. We maintain a healthy fund balance. We make investments and we budget, balance the budget every year. But long-term, the current system is unsustainable without additional revenue, revenue or structural changes. We do have a budget 101 flyer on our website for anyone who's interested. It's also being sent out as a utility mailer soon. Regarding public safety, just a few items regarding our police staffing. Chief DeRusse gave a report at City Council on July 31st that the police department is 97% staffed based on our pre-grant benchmark. So 19 positions are technically vacant, but 16 of those are new grant-funded roles that were added in the past two years. So basically we're five positions away from full staffing. So there's more officers on patrol than any time in the past decade. We have a growing bike unit, a growing traffic unit. And we have downward trends on both property and violent crime as well as vehicle thefts. And quickly on our homelessness response, we have increased shelter capacity by more than 300% since 2017. So we went from 91 beds to more than 400, including shelter space for families. And more is coming in 2025 and 2026. We've also expanded access to treatment, housing and support services. And we're continuing to address encampments and community impacts while offering real pathways out of homelessness. So that's our little help on that. And I'll move it over to Camera.
Yeah, so just general, kind of where things are at with grants and where things are at with money and just kind of generally what we're also doing kind of in community development. So I, I guess I'll start with kind of more of the operations and we'll get into more of the technical financial stuff. So operations wise, we again have this community support team that's also in community development. They have been supported by a SAMSA grant. We're working to continue to get that kind of extended. That was through congressional allocation that was made. So that was something that was advocated by one of our congressional representatives. And I, and I wish I could be really, really good to remember which one helped us on that one. I think it was Delvin. I mean, I might be wrong on that. And then ended up coming through and now supporting our community support team of social workers. They've been doing fabulous work. And they've already served, served over 4,000 individuals. And they've been fully staffed since May of this year. So it's a really impressive number for, for who they were able to go out and, and help. As that funding kind of continues, we're trying to get extensions from the federal government on that. But as that continues, we'll see that team kind of evolve and, and, you know, and shift, especially under what we're, the city's looking at for budget consideration. So just an update on that one. On the housing side of it, we do have our homelessness coordinator that works with us. We also have a special projects housing manager that is working with the community development division, as well as of course, the work that you all do to fund housing projects. A lot of stuff going on. I'm gonna mention that this is probably one of the more dynamic years that I've seen for housing projects though in a while. We, there are a few going on in, in the community. It's great to see that our nonprofits are back at a capacity to start picking this stuff back up. That was not the case a few years ago. COVID really kind of decimated a lot of the development staff, as well as the construction moratorium and everything else that was going on. And so now we're really starting to see them get their legs back under them for doing this work, which is great. So there's this opportunity, of course, for development, but I'm gonna go ahead and say this because it may be a, we may see more applications this year. I know that those that are looking to get projects up and going, you know, they are also looking at county funding pools as well. And so they're gonna be looking at, you know, local jurisdictional investment because that can help to be leveraged for when they go for state or other funding that's out there, especially for private bank funding. Everybody likes to see a public funder because we do such extensive underwriting requirements that private fund, funders typically go, great, you guys will sleuth through all the stuff. And so, so we're, we're gonna see that, you know, it wouldn't surprise me if you start to see more capital projects this year for funding consideration for housing development. And then just of course for public facility as well, because again, we're back into, you know, we have a new childcare development, you know, center that is still kind of growing, or behavioral health center that's still growing. And so we have all these efforts, right? I didn't mention previously, but in our prior discussion about childcare, I don't know if anybody remembers, but during COVID, and I wish I was so good, I can remember the exact number, but we had lost, lost at least 1,300 providers in Snohomish County or something obscene with the high number of childcare providers that we lost. So really great that we're able to do things that support, you know, efforts like upwards as well as continuing to prioritize childcare in our community for subsidies or anything else, just because we're, we're not even back to where we were pre-COVID. And of course, you know, our community has continued to grow and needs continue to go and, and income continues to somehow be restricted. And so we're constantly in a upstream battle to meet those needs. So to that extent, to get back to housing though, just to understand that, you know, there's a lot of stuff that we're seeing from community partners, but then the city itself is also doing a lot. I mentioned that there's a planning commission meeting tonight in case anybody who's been really invested in city policy work. We recently passed our 2044 comprehensive plan, which has all the targets for what we want to do for housing. There's about, oh my gosh, I wish I was really good about this, 38,000 housing units that are needed to be built in Everett over the next 20 years. That's exclusive of the shelter beds that are needed, which is about another 21, 2,400. And so we're seeing this is, there's this constant need for us to continue to develop and build and provide and sustain housing for all. And even though the city of Everett does not have as big of an allocation for funding, for grant pass-through funding as other entities like Snohomish County, like King County, but like I said earlier, the money that we do have does go far for leveraging. And so we just don't want to, we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to help support our community partners. And sometimes that also may be that we just help them in coordinating their projects so that even if we're limited on our funding, that we are able to support them in navigating their opportunities in the future. Or we, we end up supporting them with compliance of like, yep, no, your project looks like it's a really good fit. I'm sorry, we're resource strapped, but we'd love to see this move forward. Please let us know what we can do to support you. So of course, you guys being community advocates, I'll just ask you to continue to keep an eye on all the things, housing and everything else that we need, of course, public services, behavioral health, childcare, food. You know, as we continue to have this evolving funding landscape, we're gonna see that a lot of this may end up evolving in the next year completely different than what you guys just devoted on anyway, because you know what funding's gonna look like for, for stuff. So to that extent, one of the things that we're gonna want to be mindful of is federal budget, of course, coming out in October. One of the things that's included in there is the home program funds that we do get a set aside for from Snohomish County, hoping that that stays in the federal budget. Last I was aware, CDBG has been fully funded, but home has oscillated between the two branches on being fully funded still. So I've been waiting to see the National Community Development Association has been doing a lot of advocacy work at a higher level to help maintain that funding pool. Again, it is one of the only funding pools that we have for new housing construction. If not that though, there will be hopefully other opportunities for us to address housing insecurity through new housing construction. And who knows, maybe it could be that in the future, we see that CDBG is able to cover it if home program funds go away. But all that is subject to powers that be that are much higher than little me and the discussion for it. So, so just kind of updates on, on what that looks like. To make it a little bit more granular at our level, so with our consolidated plan, we did submit that in conjunction with Snohomish County that was recently submitted. Snohomish County is still navigating their injunction that they had for what was initially their continuum of care funds that covers a lot of our emergency shelter funding that goes out as well as kind of other funds that address our unhoused population and services and housing for our unhoused. The judge that was overseeing that case, there were 30 other plaintiffs that were added to that. So initially there were seven jurisdictions. It's now grown to now 30. And it's now been expanded to not just HUD continuum of care funds, but all HUD funded programs. And so we have not yet received our grant agreement from the federal government for program year 2025. We typically do not receive that until September anyway. It has even been as late as December in some years during COVID. So it's not unusual for us to still not see a grant agreement right now. When we do, we will be working with our awarded recipients on, on use of those federal funds under those grant agreements that we receive. Oh my goodness, I think I covered everything. Oh, the, the only other thing that I think I have on, on this, because I'm such a ray of sunshine with all of this right now, is that affordable housing trust fund dollars. So the 2060 funds that you guys work to allocate for our shelter operations. They are the only set aside that we do have for shelter operations. Those are based off recording fees. I'm gonna go ahead and mention that we are seeing less recording fee revenue than we have in the past. And so we typically have around 130, 140 of that that we put out. And sometimes we're able to reallocate. So this past year, we had some funding that was reallocated. So we were able to support four shelters instead of the three that were typically limited to. That funding will continue to work on reallocations should agencies underspend, just like you did with, you know, our CBG funds today. But I'm gonna go ahead and let you know ahead of time, we get that as a pastor from Snohomish County. I do not know what they're looking at for their revenue number, but I would suspect it's gonna be less than what we typically have seen in the past. And so we're gonna see that funding's gonna get a little bit tighter. And we'll continue to do reallocations as best as we can, but at some point that will reach a pinch point. And we're gonna have reallocated everything that we have and we just have the new revenue that's coming in. So just updates on where things are at for funding. One of the really good things I can share is that it appears as a congressional allocation. So where you have again, this representative that again, helped us with SAMSA funding for Health and Human Services. Congressional allocation dollars are being considered for, to be funded more so in the past. And so it's again, working with our congressional reps on, on projects that they see are best fit for their local communities. That has gotten some additional allocations more so than it did previously. So there are opportunities where we're seeing some funding pools go down, that we see others come back up that we can start to work within. And a perfect example of us doing that in the past previously, besides SAMSA, was that under HUD, we had a Congressman Larson helped us with a HUD Economic Development Initiative, which is typically the program that gets pulled under if it's congressional allocation to help with our pallet shelter at what is now Madison Family Village. That helped to buy the pallets for eight families to live in. And so we are seeing that that is something that, you know, can have opportunity in the future. And so look for the opportunities where we continue to work with our representatives on projects that can benefit from those funds. Any questions on any of that? No? Great. Okay. Well, please spread the word about CDAC membership applications. I would love to see us have a full, robust committee this next year. And I thank you all for the time that you've spent with us tonight. We will be reaching out, I know, to some of our committee members for if they are seeing an expiration of term later this year or other things that we may want to touch base with them on. But other than that, Vicky, any other comments for staff updates?
Not tonight. Not said.
Chair, I think it's back to you.
Okay, time for the best motion of all. Is there a motion to adjourn?
The best.
One of the best motions.
I will motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will second it.
Thank you. Any opposed?
No.
No? Fantastic. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Thanks, Josh. Thanks, everybody.